6:35, a call of meaning to order. First order of business is public comment. If you have a comment for the board, please come with a statement, name and address. Address your comments to the board and not to the public, and you have three minutes. Anybody? I don't know about you.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes!
Rick Stevens, 51 Tuttle Road, Lee. Thank you for letting me speak. Apparently there's some, I don't know how to say it, issues with the treehouse. According to the word of "structure," and I found that a legal definition of a structure is defined as "anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on the ground." Among other things, structures include buildings, mobile homes, walls, fences, billboards, and poster panels, whatever those are. And in the easement deed for my property under section C, it says "no structure or improvement including but not limited to a dwelling, any portion of a septic system, tennis court, swimming pool, dam, dock, or other water-dependent structure." And this one, I think, is pretty funny. If anybody knows the property, it's an aircraft landing strip. I guess they didn't visit the property before they wrote this. Or a tower or mobile home, anyways, go back, none of those shall be constructed, placed, or introduced onto the property. So, the first one that I gave you was the legal one. That's the one that the lawyers use and the judges use in court cases. And all of these that I've mentioned have something to do with disturbing the soil. Either blocks dug into the ground for the sheds or foundations, or all the rest of them, or if you're putting a dock in, you hear the big holes, the posts and all that. So, what I'd like to say is that this treehouse that is six and a half feet off the ground, resting on four brackets in the trees. So, by definition of "structure," it is not a structure. It's a treehouse, just a treehouse. It's temporary. It could be down tomorrow from the beaver or windstorm, we have no idea. And I would just, just wanted the board to know that. And I think there's some other people that are gonna get up their car. And if anybody wants to say anything, please be positive and nice and not really lynch anybody. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sam?
Suzanne Evert, 51 Tuttle Road, Lee. I would like to start by saying I am not a public speaker, or a public person for that matter. I am farther outside of my comfort zone right now than I have ever been in my life. I am here because I do not believe our treehouse is a violation of the conservation easement. There is why. A treehouse is not considered a structure because it does not have a constructed foundation. There are no posts in or on the ground under our treehouse. The ground underneath remains unchanged. And there are no building codes, building codes, or zoning codes for treehouses. According to the 2001 easement on the property, ancillary structures, defined as providing necessary support to the primary activities, may be introduced onto the property. One of the uses cited in the easement is non-commercial outdoor recreation. I believe our treehouse, or wildlife viewing platform, as it is sometimes called, falls into this category. When we built the treehouse, there were no malicious intentions. Our goal was to create a space where life slowed down. A space where we could watch the deer in the fields, the beaver in the rivers, and the red-tailed hawks in the trees on the property that has been in the Stevens family since the 1950s. I would like to express my gratitude to those who are here in support of saving our treehouse. Lee is a community that understands the intrinsic beauty of nature and the importance of conserving it. It is also a community of people who understand it is important to stand up for what is right, especially when no harm was done and no violation has taken place. I want to end with a quote about treehouses from Nick Weston, the author of the book, The Treehouse Diaries. "The treehouse was a symbol for rekindling the spirit of the child within, recapturing the days when there were few worries and anything seemed possible." We should all be able to believe anything is possible, especially a treehouse. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Wendy Fogg, 183 Winston Hill Road. Thanks. I think that many, many of us are going to have the same words to say about how we think the treehouse should stay, and all the reasons why we think it should. And it's hard not to be emotional about this. But we can't be emotional about this. We have to be realistic about this, and we have to look at this from a factual nature. And I think the facts speak for themselves, that the treehouse does not touch the ground, that the treehouse is not an infringement or poor use, or in detriment to the land or the river or nature in any way. It doesn't harm anyone. Does the treehouse meet the setbacks to the river? It doesn't matter. It's not on the ground. Was there prior written approval of the grantee? No, there was not. So, all the other things that we know to be true are there for all of us to see. Rick and Suzanne know that a mistake was made in not requesting permission. However, they had received advice from folks on the zoning board and from our code enforcement officer, that there shouldn't be any problem with this. All that said, I propose that because the treehouse does not in any way truly breach this easement in any way, that just as a measure of goodwill and good citizenship on both sides, I would propose that Rick Stevens write a letter requesting permission to build the treehouse, and that the select board approve it as being polite and nice, but not necessary. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ladies first.
Bambi Miller, 15 Sherwin Road. First, I want to say I love treehouses, and it's beautiful. Second, I consider Ricky a friend of mine and a neighbor. Thirdly, I need to explain to you, if you don't know, I managed the Stratford County Conservation District for 21 years. I managed easements, I helped people put easements on their property, and I defended easements in court. It's not a fun thing, but it's a requirement of an easement. An easement is in perpetuity. That means you agree to it, and it is consent where it's agreed upon by both parties. You sign an agreement, you agree to certain terms, and it protects it for the future. Perpetuity doesn't mean "until I change my mind." It means forever, and it means you can count on it. So, that's where I get into trouble, unfortunately. And I went and I took a copy of the easement, I looked at what it is, because every easement is different. They're all written for the property and for the owner of the property. And Ricky was the person that worked with the selectmen at the time to put together this easement. Now, not only does it say "no structure or improvement," it also says that these improvements cannot be within 150 feet of the top of the bank of the lampade, and at least 200 feet from the top of the nearest bank of the little river. So, we have a situation there where it is, it's, there's not that distance at all. So, there needed to be formal written permission given ahead of time. But in that area, which is 150 feet back from the lampade, 200 feet back from the top of the bank of the little river, that wasn't even in question of building, because everybody agreed that this property was really important for certain things, including the wood turtle. And I'm sure Ricky believed in this when it was written. This was his word, and I, I know he's a man of his word, and I talked to him, and I understand that he may have misstepped here on this. And I feel bad. But I think of the future of conservation easements, and if we're serious about anything that's in perpetuity, even though it's a friend of ours, I am here to say I am happy to put my time towards helping him work with the selectmen, but possibly moving it to a place where it would be appropriate. And I would come and get my hammer out and help. So, that is where I'm standing on this. And if anybody has questions, I also have copies of the easement. People don't really understand all of the words of an easement, it's very difficult to understand, but it's important that we don't take them lightly, or they're not worth anything. So, there's no point in putting it into words and writing it down if it's not upheld. And it's a responsibility of this town to uphold the easement. So, I'm sorry, I love, I love treehouses, and I would be happy to help him move it to an appropriate location.
Scott. Thank you. Good evening, court members. My name is Scott Hogan. My wife and I live at 5 Lee Hill Road, right down the street, longtime resident of Lee, and I've been a longtime friend of Suzanne. But I've also spent the last 25 years as a practicing land use attorney. You're in New Hampshire. Self-employed land use attorney for 25 years, mostly out of Lee and Durham. Class of '89, UNH grad with an environmental science degree. So, I've also had the opportunity to see a lot of conservation easement deeds, as well as others. Actually, back when I, in '91, when I started at Franklin Pierce in law school, I got the chance, over several summers, to travel through Maine and New Hampshire and Vermont, and visit lots of land trusts and see their conservation easement deeds, analyze them for the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forest to sponsor me for that. So, I've seen a lot of them, and I've seen this one. So, I think, and I'm just speaking as a citizen of Lee and a friend of Suzanne's, I think there's a New Hampshire way and a Lee way to resolve this. And I've seen the town's letter, I've seen the recent letter from the Southeast Land Trust. And we could spend a lot of time, and I think this is properly an agenda item, you know, for us to come back and actually have some time to discuss with all of you. And we're a little constrained in our thoughts tonight. So, in the context of that little bit of time, so I understand that we look at the easement, I've seen the town attorney's letter, there is additional, so it says "no structures within X feet," there's no question about that. But there's a sentence that was left out of the town attorney's letter, and I think the discussion to some extent, which after that says, however, "ancillary structures to the property's use and dedication and improvements including..." So, there's a list of things that you can do. There are a list of structures that you can build. Road fence, bridge, culvert, barn, maple, sugar, house, or shed may be constructed, placed, or introduced, only as necessary in the accomplishment of the purposes. And the primary purpose of this easement has right in it, "non-commercial recreational use." And so, this structure, I think Suzanne, you know, really well and eloquently described it, a place to go and take advantage of the beauty of this place, and observe nature and wildlife in peace. So, there may be some technical procedural aspects of this that, that everybody needs to work through, but I think those can be easily worked through. And I would just really encourage this to become an actual agenda item on one of your really soon agendas, because the 60-day clock is kind of ticking in everybody's mind right now. And, you know, I don't think anybody is really clear, you know, what that means. You know, after that, perhaps Southeast Land Trust gets involved, or, you know, unfortunately, if it has to go, you know, more formally. It just doesn't seem that it should have to go in all of those directions. And I think we ought to have an opportunity to discuss it a little bit further when we're not all thinking about three or five minutes of public comment. But I appreciate you all indulging my comments and everybody else's. Thank you. Thanks very much.
You first, then John Tapp.
When I think of the Stevens property, I mean, to me, it's the epitome of conservation. You know, I mean Ricky has made his living sowing a, you know, renewable resource. So, you know, he's a great guy. I've heard two people that have come up, and they're, they're using the word "structure." And to me, I mean, a lot of it is on, what is the definition of a structure? Well, if you look up the definition of a structure, it is something that's affixed to the ground. This is not. This is something that's in the tree. So, it literally, if you're gonna, you know, rule on this, then, you know, I mean, birdhouses and, you know, whatever it is in the tree, I mean, you know, everybody's gonna have to take them down, because, you know, they're structures at that point. So, you know, to me, it's just, this is, it's ludicrous that this is occurring, and, you know, I mean, I think it's, there is, you know, there's some bad blood or something that's pushing this forward, but it's just, it's unnecessary. So, thank you.
John Tapp in 187 Stepping Stones Road. I want to thank Bambi for reading the text to us, and also want to thank a previous speaker for suggesting that this should be an agenda item, because I think that it is important that we actually have the text before us on the screen, so that we don't have people who are quoting a piece of it and skipping over another part of it. And then I also want to bring your attention or remind you that the town paid part of the cost of this easement. The town of Lee paid $25,000, and the federal government paid $35,000 for this easement. And those are significant costs for the town of Lee. It's something that we have done a number of times before. And the decisions you make tonight, or I hope at a future night, will have a strong bearing on the purchase of easements in the future and what they mean in the town of Lee.
Anyone else?
How you doing? John Rochek, 29 Ashlawn Road in Newmarket. I have a professional treehouse building business, and I get my lumber from Rick. And I actually was, when he went out there, I didn't know all this stuff was going on, but I've been a professional tree climber for 30 years, certified arborist, and I know probably more about trees than probably just anybody in this, in this building right now. Everything he did will not hurt the trees, if that's of any concern. I have bolted, screwed, cabled, you name it, to keep some of the oldest trees in America alive in Connecticut and New York. I build treehouses so people, kids, can get outside and actually be a part of the environment again, because all these kids today, all they do is look at their phones and look at their devices. And I have dealt with a lot of, I built treehouses in Rye, Hampton, Portsmouth, all the towns. I have contact of the building inspectors. Every one of them tells me there are no codes covering treehouses. They just basically look the other way, because everything you use to build in the tree is not made to build a structure which is connected to the ground. In fact, I built one in my own house. That's how my whole business started six years ago. So, it seems we're losing sight of what's really going on here, right? You're losing, not seeing the forest with trees, excuse the pun. This man built a treehouse. It's not gonna affect anything. We all see what's going on in the climate. I've been outside for 30 years. If you really want to start changing things, this treehouse is not the way to go for changing the environment. It's not gonna affect the turtles, it's not gonna affect anything. It's a place for them to go out and enjoy nature. Isn't that what it's all about? So, and I understand where you're coming from. Okay, I understand that, laws are laws, but you know what, there comes a point in time where, you know, there have been a lot of laws in America that have been overturned, because they don't make sense anymore. If you don't want to have treehouses, then they should...
I don't, I don't...
I know that, but I'm just saying that if that's what, if that's what you want, if, if they want to start making easements that say in them specifically, "we do not allow treehouses," fine, let them go to that. But at this point, this is not a structure in any way, shape, or form. I've dealt with every town around here, and not one of them has said anything to me about it being a structure. That's why they can't, they can't regulate it. I use equipment in the trees that are, it's, they don't even, they don't even know what it is, because it's geared specifically for building treehouses in trees. And I helped him figure out how exactly to do it, to do the least amount of harm to the trees. So, like he said, the only thing that's gonna bring down a treehouse would be a tornado or a windstorm, like in any other building. So, I think you should really, you know, is this where you want to go right now? Is this what you want, you know, what you want to chew off right now is a treehouse? There's a lot more, there's bigger problems going on with the environment than how close he is to the river of the treehouse. Thank you.
I just want to make a little clarification of something I said earlier. As far as 51 Tuttle Road, the amount that paid was paid, it was $10,500 or something like that. The other part went to 28 Tuttle Road, so. I don't think people realize how much of a, how much landowners give up when they do an easement. It's the love of the land. We had particular circumstances in our case. We wouldn't do it again, I'll tell you that. It restricts you so much, and it's forever. You don't know if you wanted your kids to build a house, house lot, or what you can think of. So, I think Ricky and my wife and I would both give the money back with interest if we could. I hope this whole situation doesn't make a problem further on when people want to do easements. I think it's, shouldn't make too big a deal of it. Thank you.
My name's Kim, I live at 7 Love Lane. And I just wanted to say that when we moved here, we felt kind of overwhelmed. We didn't know anybody, and we had a lot of work to do. And Ricky showed up. And I don't have facts about, I just heard about all this. I didn't make up a speech or anything. But all I heard him talk about is his love of his property and the land and the river, and how much that we were gonna love Lee. And I don't know very few people, but he came to my house more than once and said, "If you need me, call me." And that means a lot. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I hope things work out for you, because I had two boys, and I wish they weren't on their Playstation so much, because I used to be out in the yard. And the biggest thing that meant the world to me, ironically, is the treehouse in the neighborhood. And I just wish you luck. Thank you.
John Moss, 48 Tuttle Road. Another rebutter. I think that's just the two of us, right? I've been just listening to this, and I understand the position of the conservation group, but we're not, this treehouse is not impacting the soil, and it breaks between the tree and the river. If the treehouse comes down and Suzanne and Ricky want to put something up like a tent, a four-season tent on the ground, it's gonna influence the ground more, so we can, we're taking care of the tree business. And I think the idea of influencing what's happening to the soil is how you have a non-structure up in a tree that's there for good use. I guess if we're in a town where hunting's a possibility, hunting stands go up everywhere. And I think that's my decision.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, go ahead. I checked, because she's already spoken, that's why.
This will be very quick. Wendy Fogg, 183 Winston Hill Road. Before I forget, this was from Arthur Bradbury. He says, he says, "Hi. I've been in the shop all day and not fit to go out tonight. But taking a break from three hours of sanding, the only thing I could suggest after reading the easement is that it is wildlife-blind, blending into the natural environment, whose sole purpose is to enjoy the wildlife. Tell Rick and Suzanne good luck."
Anyone else?
Perfect music for that.
Go ahead.
What's your statement?
My name is Carolyn Tremblay. I live at 63 Bell Lane. And I was completely not planning on talking tonight. But I work in another community. I work in Dover. And people are laughing at Lee. We're this scrooge-y little town that's taking somebody's treehouse away. And I keep thinking to myself, is this what Lee is becoming? I know there's laws and stuff, but we really need to keep in mind we are a community and what this community means.
My name is Barbara Locke. I live at 228 Stepping Stone Road in Barrington. I told Suzanne I would not speak. But one of the other speakers, or actually two of them, mentioned tree stands, hunting vines. And the lady that works writing easements mentioned setbacks from rivers. Trees don't grow according to setbacks from rivers. Hunters don't put tree stands, which can be a platform or a complete enclosed structure, depending on the number of feet away from a river. If you look at pictures of tree stands, which the state of New Hampshire says are allowed on easement land for the purpose of hunting, it looks very similar to a treehouse. I don't see what the difference is in Rick and Suzanne having a tree stand to enjoy nature or a hunter to kill nature. Thank you.
Chris Mox, 48 Tuttle Road. We've been neighbors with Ricky for over 30 years now. We've known the entire Stevens clan. And Lloyd, God bless him. And of all the, you know, these people have always been good stewards of their property. They take care of their property. They're aware of nature. I don't know the laws, but I, this seems like something that could totally be figured out. And it's, it's not a structure. So I think, you know, it's kind of a point to me that I, you know, when you go up and down, we go up and down that river. There's all sorts of things close to the Lampy River. Now, maybe they were there before or they're not on the easement. But there's other things that I would think could be impacting more than a tree for, or tree, tree for, treehouse. And I just can't emphasize enough that I think that they're great stewards of the land and I don't think that they should be a huge issue.
Hi, my name is Rich Tremblay, 63 Bell Lane. And I just want to say that I do support the treehouse. It should stay. I haven't heard anything tonight that would dissuade me from that. I know that easements are contracts, but I also know that contracts can be rewritten. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Nizarian-McLean. I live at 51 Harding Mill Road. I've known the Stevens family for over 30 years. I've known them mostly because they're, because the town does the fishing derby on their land. And we've been able to do that because they have been great stewards of the land and they have been open to the community. I have a question though. I don't understand what the big deal, what the problem is about having a treehouse. How does it impact the land or the conservation easement or, you know? It's not touching anything. How can any of the selectmen answer? Or am I not allowed to ask that question during the selectmen meeting?
You can ask anything you want, then we don't have to answer it.
Oh, I don't mean you have to answer it. Do you know? I mean, like, everybody's talking about, you know, it's a tree, it's above the land, it's not hurting the land. So what's the problem? Why is it, I don't know. Is it, is there anybody here who can answer that? Okay, okay. Okay. And then I have like another comment.
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. And again, this is why I said, to echo what was said before, that this should be an agenda item and we should have the text of the conservation easement up there. Because it has nothing to do with whether it's harming the land or not. The issue is whether or not it's allowed by the conservation easement. And to be talking about that without having the text of the easement in front of us, you really can't talk intelligently about it. And so I just would like to encourage the selectmen if they haven't gotten the message. And I'm sure you actually have.
I think we got the message.
It should be, it should be an agenda item and we should have a text. It has nothing to do with whether it harms the land or not.
Okay, then I'd say, I don't know. It seems like if it's not harming the land, then you're actually conserving the land, so. Okay, put the text up at another meeting, whatever. Can you tell they're a little nervous? So Bambi was talking earlier about the future of conservation easements and how this could have a negative impact on conservation easements. And I think she's right, but I think she's right for a different reason. I think it kind of discourages people from putting their land into conservation because really a treehouse, you know, or some little fun thing that's not hurting anything and you can't do that on your own land. And I would discourage the town from, from purchasing easements on land because, I don't know, somebody said earlier something about, well, the, I don't know, is it the State Conservation Commission or whoever it is could become involved? It's a big, long, drawn-out process, obviously. That means lawyers and money and all that kind of stuff. And also I believe it was Billy Humble in the newspaper who said, you know, "Well, it can cost the town all sorts of money." And I don't really want to, like, every time anybody wants to put up a treehouse or anything like that, I don't want to have to, you know, like, I don't want the town to have to spend all sorts of money. My money, your money. And so the threat of legal action would cause me to vote no on any future easements. And the final thing that I would say is if, you know, people are worried that there's going to be all these legal fees and stuff, why doesn't the town just sell it back to the Stevenses? I mean, it's like such a small amount of money. If I say sell it back, it's cheaper than paying a lawyer. Thank you.
Okay, third time for winning.
It's processed, you know? First, I would like to make note that your question, that you asked, "Can anybody answer these questions?" And the answer to that should be a really clear yes because on this letter that was written to Rick Stevens and signed by Scott Bugby and John Lacourse says that they understand it. So then that would lead me to believe that tonight you're just choosing to not answer questions. Is that correct?
This is public forum. This is not something that was on the agenda to be discussed. We'll definitely discuss it at a future meeting, but this is public comment time, so.
Great, okay. So then my other public comment would be that if this is, if this is another one of those times where somebody who knows that they have stepped out of line says, "This could cost the town a lot of money", and so everybody gets all nervous and says, "No, no, 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 we can't do that." And I think we want to be really careful about who we let throw stuff like that at us.
It's scare tactic.
It is, it is bullying.
She's speaking.
And, but he's right. And so, you know what, folks? Let's put on our big girl and boy pants and stand up and do the right thing here. And don't sit back. Don't stand back just because somebody tells you you should or just because somebody tells you it's hard or just because somebody tells you that they know more than you do. No, we don't have to do that. So let's all stand together and figure out how to fix this mess. And also rethink the people that we put in places of power to make these decisions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Athena Zambur. I live on 11 Love Lane. And I just wanted to go over just something, just more to like, go over my past. I've lived in Lee for 20 years. My parents bought a two-acre little property off of my grandfather. And we built our house completely out of scratch. We completely cut down all the property. We used all the trees. And we put it forward. And the one person who was very, very, very pivotal in helping us build our house and making it proper so that it was properly sound and structured was Ricky Stevens. He milled everything and made everything perfect for us for when we were ready to move in. And on another note, growing up, I didn't have, as it was said before, we have a lot of youth nowadays, they just, they stay on video games. They don't go outside much. But growing up, I never had one form of electronic until I was 16 years old. And so that made me have to go outside and have to actually enjoy the environment. And the one pivotal thing is we would always go out to the woods and play, but we would always end up in Ricky Stevens' part of the woods. Because it was always one of the best places to be. It was always the coolest because there were beaver dams, there were all types of things. And he always allowed us to be there. And after the years of knowing Ricky Stevens, I have no doubt in my mind that he has any malicious intent for this treehouse whatsoever. That it was specifically designed for recreational and specific, personal, and amazing uses. So that's all I want to say.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice, right? Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. All right. Next owner of business is Tom Johnsville, police chief. Want a second lease agreement?
Probably have a copy of a recent evan. Room, score, and Phil Miles, part-time officer. Those in charge of the police program, Seacoast Harley-Davidson. He has graciously offered us a $20,000 estate, all equipped, for a $0. Two other officers besides myself, who you guys know, second life. School free.
I know, I know. Couple of questions. Why?
Well, it's safe to do in the summertime. Motorcycle, sedan. It allows us to be more proactive, to be more vehicle-oriented. Sitting on the side of the road, just getting off the old door, running radar. We have the new laser radar that we purchased. Just to give the guys another tool to do their job. And it's another attraction to keep people as well, the ones who are interested in it.
Second question is, why isn't that costing us money? It's not a good deal.
No.
I just want to make sure.
It's a lease for a year. It's just, it's a no-cost lease. So at the end of the year, we turn it in. And then if we decide we want to keep going, if they want to give us another $0 lease, then we'll keep going.
One other question. Years ago, we had one in the summer.
Correct, we had one. When I took over as chief, I was the only one certified as a motor officer.
So there was nobody else?
Nobody else.
That's why you got rid of it.
Exactly. We're sitting there, you know, we wanted to use it occasionally. You put a battery in it because it sucks so long. Didn't make any sense to keep it.
Chief, I guess maybe because I'm aware of what happened way back when. Are we going to train? Do they take some kind of course on driving?
Yeah, it's a 40-hour course right over Seacoast Harley-Davidson in Northampton.
I'm sorry, where?
Seacoast Harley-Davidson in Northampton. Actually, Phil Miles is the lead instructor. And we'll do and get certified.
And there's some equipment we need to buy?
We still have the helmets. We still have boots. You know, and that's pretty much would be the breeches. We'd have to get them. And then we still have some of those. They may even fit the guys. But we still have the most, majority of the equipment.
Okay. Just for my own, is there any issues with insurance if we start running motorcycles?
We have to insure it.
Yeah. No, I just wonder if there's a, yeah. Okay, great.
I have a question. So the lease says January 1st to December 31st. And you may have seen, I put a note on it, that obviously it wasn't effective January 1st. So is it still going to run through December 31st, 2020? Or will it be a year from tomorrow or something?
December 31st, because you won't be using it anyway, January, February, September.
Okay, thank you.
It'll probably actually, you know, end sometime late October when you can't ride it anymore.
We did this years ago, right?
The last motorcycle we actually purchased outright with drug forfeiture money.
Okay, all right. Because I thought we did something like this before.
You know, there was a motorcycle before the last one we had, so it's possible that was a lease. Manchester Harley-Davidson used a lease on motorcycles.
Can I ask a contract question? There's a lot of scratching out and stuff. Can we redo this so it's got all the pertinent information and not?
That's a, this was a Seacoast Harley-Davidson document.
Okay.
The chief gave it to me. I ran through it. Those are my suggested changes. He sent it back to Harley-Davidson.
Yeah.
And they agreed everything by signing his initials.
It's legal.
So.
So you're okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Do you expect any other officers that might want to train, drive motorcycles?
Well, I have two currently who have their motorcycle licenses who are interested in moving to training. So that'll, at least get it out there, you know, during the weekend, the evening shifts and all.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
You good? Any other questions?
No.
Okay. I moved to approve a $0 lease with Seacoast Harley-Davidson as presented for the use of a motorcycle for the Lee Police Department. Said lease shall expire on December 31st, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Item number four. It's me.
It's you.
So we received a grant for the parish house assessment from the Hampshire Preservation Alliance. They finally got the paperwork out. It's worth $4,500. And there's a form we have to sign to accept those particular funds. Another piece of information, we did not get a grant for the town hall. We were denied, we were, they were going to give us money, but they found out that we started the assessment before we got the grant. So they invalidated, invalidated, excuse me, validated the award because they wanted to do something else, not do an assessment.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said. They wanted to do something else.
They thought, well, I'm getting two different kinds of information. From the Hampshire Preservation Alliance, they wanted us to do, take all the reports that we've done so far on the town hall, compile them together, and provide a report. According to Lynn Monroe from the preservation company who's been on the fellowship awardation, that's not enough information, according to her. They still have to do something else besides that. So I'm getting two different, I don't know who to believe. So, but we didn't get one for the town hall. They gave us an exception. The lady that I spoke to, Beverly Thomas, she's been there forever, it seems. They've only given two exceptions. They've only given two exceptions. This is the second one for the parish house. So, they validated it so much that they gave an exception to their own rule.
And for forty-five hundred dollars, what do we get done at the parish house?
Well, the report is like eleven thousand. So, this is a grant to pay for some of that eleven thousand. So, we won't get it until the report's completed. So, it'll just, if we accept it, it'll go into the general fund or go into the assigned fund balance. If we want to, we can put it back in next year if we want to.
I mean, I assume there's some important things that need to be done for the parish house versus maybe some lesser important things.
Yeah, this is just for the assessment. This has nothing to do with fixing the parish house or doing anything.
Just for the assessment.
Just for the assessment, just for the report and the consultation from AECM and the preservation company, that's all this is for.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, if we proceed further with the town hall and the parish house, if we want to, there's other grants available for that, L chip being one of them. But this is just for the assessment, just for the assessment.
Gotcha. So, Scott, that means we're not gonna get anything from them for town hall?
Not for the assessment.
But we could get monies to refurbish.
From, yes, from L chip, yes.
From L chip, L chip money.
Which the report that we're gonna get for the town hall is a requirement for applying for L chip funds.
So, this is like two different, there's monies that are associated with the building and these are monies associated with the assessment.
Yeah, I got you.
To confuse you even further, the town, the Hampshire Preservation Alliance gets the money for these assessments or these grants that we're getting from L chip. So, scrap your money around that one.
Well, we better accept the money before it flows.
All right. I'll just have to make up the words. I don't, there wasn't a thing made for the, was there?
We probably, you probably don't need to vote on it. You just, I mean, I think at a previous meeting, the board voted to apply for the grant.
Yes, we did.
But we didn't accept it, really, did we?
Well, we're not accepting the money yet. We don't have, we don't have the money. So.
So, it's more an FYI thing?
Correct. Well, the document is signed.
Just sign this thing. There's also a report we have to do after we get the report.
Is that something the TCBC is going to handle?
We could do that, yes.
I just don't want it to fall through cracks.
No, well.
You're gonna lose the money. You have to pay it back, right?
Well, they will give it to you. All right. Anything else with that? Good though.
Sounds good.
Number five, Julie, Lieutenant Minister.
Thank you. So, I just thought it would be a good idea. I know that it's been discussed previous to tonight, but seeing as we are on the eve of the primary, we just want to confirm when each of the selectmen are going to be. At Maskway School.
I love the sign. Good idea.
Lighten right there.
I will be there at six forty-five. What a guy.
Till eleven?
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Bugby?
I'm there from eleven until whenever Trump comes. Whenever that is.
It's time between four and five. Boy, that's a nail in a town, Johnny.
Some people work between four and five.
That's right, some people do, I agree.
Thank you. Any other questions about tomorrow?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
As you saw, I mean, we've put notices out everywhere we could think of, so.
I appreciate that. Is that the Maskway School now? Maskway School, I saw the big sign blinking, blinking.
Did the state site get fixed?
Yes. State site got fixed. I called Foster's and told them that they got it wrong. So, they said they would correct their information. As you saw or hopefully saw, we put signs on this building, we put a sign at town hall. It's all over Facebook, so we're open to people and all of the town website.
Who opens up Maskway School for this? They have their janitor, yeah, custodian.
Well, we hope so anyway.
I sure hope he gets certified.
I mean, there was the great coffee maker debacle, so.
Did that solve?
Did it solve?
Well.
I was there at four and there was no coffee maker out, so.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna, unless, yeah, unless it appears in the morning, we're just gonna take the one from downstairs. Phil's gonna bring it up, Phil Stevens.
It's the same kind of coffee stuff, okay.
We might have to end a couple of hours.
The voters guy?
You want the good news or the bad news? Because all I have is bad news. The bad news is the person who's working on it is deathly ill. He won't die, but, yes, he's the one that.
The flyer.
Yes. So, he's been sick since Thursday. So, he doesn't have anything. So, I'm instructed to find out when the absolute positively drop dead.
I'll have to, I'll have to get ahold of, can't think of the company. You know who they are. Allegra.
Because basically what it's gonna be, it's going to be no new information. Basically, what we gave them at the Glee recession on a two-pager, back and front, just like it was last year. So, it's just an update of that information. It's not, nothing to add but earth shattering.
Color?
Yes, color. Full color, not full color.
Full color.
Which is different. But that's what it's gonna be if you want to tell them that. So, if you can let me know when they let you know when they're drop dead, we'll do as quickly as we can. But we did not anticipate him being sick, but.
It happens.
Okay. So, does anyone have any questions, comments, changes, additions, deletions?
I had that one that already sent you, but you already fixed it, so that's fine.
Yep.
Looks good.
I was good with it.
Okay. Larry, terrific, thank you. The next item is the Oyster River Cooperative School District indemnification agreement. A number of years ago, was it 2011, 12, or 13, 14? Was the last, was the last time that we signed one of these for the school district. And at the time we did that, I sent the school district's document over to Primak's. There were some changes. The district agreed to the changes and that's the one we executed. We haven't executed another one since. They asked about it when the sustainability committee used the Maskway School, but I told them, well, we don't have time to get that done. So, they have not asked for one for tomorrow. So, I am putting this in front of you with an abundance of caution. I don't want anything to disrupt having the election in Maskway. So, we signed it in 2014. It's the same document from 2014, with the exception of the freeze and we're doing it, so. Thank you.
So, I'm stuck.
You're the space.
Get off freeze, let's get off freeze.
Thank you. You may recall, I think I and maybe Steve Bullock have mentioned a couple of times that we got a letter from Madbury. They formed a collaborative committee. It has a longer title, but that's how I remember it. Collaborative committee. After that, they took a tour of the transfer station along with a gentleman from Durham. I tagged along and they were very, very impressed with our transfer station. Again, as you know, the communities all over the country, but the communities in Lee that are single or dual stream are panicking. I don't think would be too strong a word because they're now paying upwards of a hundred dollars a ton to get rid of the recyclables and we are still making money because we separate everything. So, Mr. Bullock is going to be meeting with that committee in Madbury Wednesday night. There's been some more exchange of information. Steve seems to feel pretty strongly that Madbury's gonna be looking at us to maybe use our transfer station or something. I'm not convinced that they're at that point yet. I think they've still got a long way to go with their investigations and what they're gonna do. But I just wanted to keep you up to speed on what's happening. I don't know what Durham, I think the gentleman from Durham was one of the town councilors. I think he was just there to see what can be done. I think they're gonna have to start separating out at least glass and cardboard, so. So, anyway, we'll keep you posted on what's happening with that. Other than that, I don't think I have anything. Getting through tomorrow, which obviously is a bigger deal for the clerk's office and the superposals and the checklist. And then, March, we'll be heading into March 10th and what needs to be done for that, so.
Well, thank you for the update also on the water that the traffic circle.
Yes, yes. It actually looks like it's gonna happen sooner than they had been telling us at one point. So, that's a good thing.
That's good.
I'll keep you posted as we get information. I think, I think they're gonna hopefully be doing a better job than they've done in the past in keeping us up to date. Been a bit of an information vacuum, so far we've been concerned, but I'm hoping that we'll start to hear from them more often.
Okay, good. Excellent. Okay. Item number six. I moved to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sign some stuff.
Do you want to do that now?
Sure. There's not too, too much, right?
No, it's been worse.
You just want to sift through those. Those are just that quiet on. Hey, you don't do anything, I do that. How's that? Hopefully.
Still working.
That's number nine. I thought you could answer right now. I'd get yelled at. They don't give you too much leeway out here. There's no leeway. How's that, Mr. Brown? How's that?
Yep.
I moved into a non-public session, I'm sure RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, section two, subsection A and I?
No, L.
What's now is L?
Sorry.
Oh, my goodness. So, no I, but L. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, roll call vote. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. McLauren?
Aye.
Mr. Bugby, motion passes. Oh, I have multiple forms.
This looks good. Good-sized print, you can see it. It's a diary.
We're not still in the minutes for those two. Item nine, miscellaneous unfinished business, anything? The only thing I was prompted to say is the open house is Saturday, ten to two. We have fire coverage, so we can have more than twelve, thirteen people in the building, so that's good.
It's a new number now.
It is a new number?
It's a new number, it's twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three. Well, we still have whoever it is. I don't know who's assigned this, but, so we can have lots of people.
We hope to have twenty-three.
Other than that, oh, and March third is the other one. I don't think it's the example.
Last one, Scott?
March third is the week before the vote. So, hopefully we get lots of people coming asking questions and happy to spend their money, maybe.
Yeah, I'd spend their money.
We'll see. I think that was it, anything from gentlemen, nothing, lady board?
Lady board meets on Thursday, I'll know after that.
Okay. Nothing?
No.
Okay. Move to adjourn?
Starting. Starting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.